All right, I think we'll get started, Martha, if that's good with you.
It's fine with me, I've got 7:02.
Beautiful. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting for the Town of Newbury for the 16th of December 2020. So as a preliminary matter, my name is Pete Pecos, I'm the Chair of the Newbury Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. George Morse?
Yes.
Thank you. Larry Murphy?
Yes.
Thank you. Leslie Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Woody Knight?
Yes.
Thank you. Mary won't be joining us this evening. JR can't be with us this evening, so Alicia will be Acting Chair, and I understand that it might be coming up a little bit later. So Alicia, you'll probably take the attendance when you open the Select Board meeting. Okay, thank you. Town Council, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Brian Winner?
And Winner is present.
Thank you, sir. Town Council, Town staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Martha Taylor?
Here.
Emily Noble?
Here.
Thank you. Anticipated speakers presenters on the agenda, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. TJ Melvin?
Here.
Thank you. Scott Kinter?
He's here, but he's muted.
Okay, great. Bob Grasso?
He's here, he's also muted.
Okay. Mark DiPiero?
Yeah.
Thank you. Jill Mann?
She's here, she was muted.
Okay. Steve Sawyer?
Not seeing him yet.
Okay. Arthur Cusinsus?
Think he's here.
Okay.
And also Julie O'Brien and Tracy Blazer are here for staff.
Okay, wonderful, thank you, guys. Good evening, this is December 16th, 2020, the open meeting of the Newbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to an outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order supersedes the requirements of the open meeting law. You have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order can be found posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Newbury Planning Board is convened by video conference via Zoom as posted on the Planning Board's agenda, which can be found on the Planning Board section of the Town's website, and which identifies how the public may join. You may join us by going to http://zoom.us and entering meeting ID number 832-7141-3056, or by calling 1-929-2056099, and entering the meeting ID when prompted. Please note that our first component of our meeting will be a site plan review, which will be held jointly with a select board as a special permit hearing on the proposed project. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that attendees and participants are participating by video or telephone conference. Meeting materials were provided to the board prior to the meeting for review. Applicants or their representatives may be called upon to speak, and if needed, share information to the screen. Please state your intention after you have been called. So we have some ground rules, and there goes something like this. This is to really allow us to conduct our business, ensure accurate minutes. I, as a Chair, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After speakers conclude their remarks, I will then go on the list of Board members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, for all attendees except Board members and staff, please remember to mute your phone, which is *6, to toggle mute and unmute, and on your computer, the mute button when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones, with using tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. Please be aware that video participants can see you, and that you should take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any responses, please wait until I view the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If Board members wish to engage in discussions with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself when you wish to speak. With regards to public comment, there will be an opportunity for public comment and questions during the public hearings. After Board members have spoken, I will afford the public an opportunity to comment and/or ask questions in the following manner. I will seek questions and comments through the Zoom Raise Hand function. Video conference participants, to raise your hand, click on the Participants button in the menu below the photo gallery at the bottom of the Zoom screen. Hover your cursor over this area if you don't see it. A list of participants will open and display on the right. At the bottom of this participant area, you will see an option to click Raise Hand button. Please ensure your name is fully and correctly displayed on the participant list. You may rename yourself by using the more functions next to your name. For telephone participants, to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, hit *9 on your phone keypad. I will then allow questions and comments from members of the public who have raised their hands in the order in which they are listed. The system lists in order those who have raised a hand first. Each participant will be called on to provide his or her name and address, and then ask the question or make a comment. I will afford the applicant, or the participant, or his representative, the opportunity to reply. Your hand will be lowered when you have been given the floor for your question. I will then continue down the list of the raised hand columns, and again, afford the participant, applicant, representative, an opportunity to speak. Should there be a physical or electronic submitted of questions or concerns, they will be noted for the record, and again, the participant, applicant, representative will be afforded the opportunity to speak if the issues raised have not been addressed. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Okay, I think that takes care of the housekeeping stuff. Let's take a look at our agenda. So let me pop this up. I apologize for the in the background. It happens. Okay. Have to go downstairs to do that. So our public hearings will start at 7:50. I apologize again. We're going to, so we do have three public hearings, so we're going to try to limit the time applicants in their presentations to be about 30 minutes, just so we can get through our agenda. Larry, I'm going to have you just take control for a couple of seconds while I go deal with this.
Okay. Well, we're not ready to begin the public hearing, obviously. It's only 7:10. Martha, do you want to do the planning report, or?
Sure, I just have a couple of items. First of all, we do not have any submissions or appearances tonight. So yes, we're skipping over that. As far as the Planning Director's report is concerned, I just wanted to alert you all to a couple of other new projects that are going to be coming our way. I had a meeting with Vince Godin, who owns the two Old Point Road, Angie's, the former Angie's Service Station on Plum Island, and he had originally been planning to and gotten approval from the ZBA to construct a restaurant on that site. He has scaled back the project and is still planning to do a food service, but a much smaller sort of indoor dining. It's going to be largely an outdoor patio dining kind of a situation. So that will require site plan review from the Board, and he is eager to move forward with it, so that may be coming our way fairly soon. There's also been some renewed interest in the 170 Orchard Street parcel. Those of you who were on the Board a couple of years ago, recall that there was an OSRD proposed for that site, which was withdrawn, and it's a challenging site. So that, I've had inquiries about that from time to time, and one recently, so we'll see where that goes.
Is that the old cornfield?
Yes, it is. It is the old cornfield, exactly. And yeah, we've had a couple of site walks, and there were some members who couldn't attend, so we will be rescheduling. We're scheduling a second site walk for both of those locations, 15 Coleman and 84 Boston Road. So keep an eye on the weather and see what seems to work for everybody. And that's, I think that's all I have at the moment.
Well, Pete, in your absence, we determined that there were no submissions or appearances, and we skipped over that, and Martha's given her report, so.
Oh, Larry, you want to know something? You can drive for a while, I'm just going to enjoy my tea.
Well, I don't know if we're ready yet. Do we want to do, do we want to do liaison reports?
We could really quickly, we've got two minutes until, and I don't see, we're missing a couple of Select Board members still. Let's see, here comes Jerry. So we're missing Jeff.
Jerry. I spoke with Jeff a little while ago, he was aware of it.
Okay.
Well, I can do the liaison for the Select Board for last week, but it, I mean, it was basically kind of inconsequential as far as like Planning Board, it was more about renewing licenses and going over some of the dynamics of how the licenses are renewed for businesses and liquor licenses and things of that nature.
Well, I can talk about the last ZBA meeting was on November 19th. It's perhaps old news now, but the Jennifer Ford and Seacoast Canine were on the agenda, looking for a determination that her activities there fall under the customary home occupation, and it was denied. There was, you know, lengthy hearing, and the Board considered it and denied it. And the other issue Martha has already spoken about, the 14 Plum Island Boulevard, the Angie's Service Station property was on in the the ZBA approved what was essentially a modification of the 2019 permit to scale back the the restaurant, and it talked about the need, among other things, to come in before the Planning Board for a site plan review. And lastly, the continued 40B for Bach Pearson Drive is on their agenda for tomorrow night. And I think their intention at that time is to focus on civil engineering concerns and questions and wetlands issues. And that's all I have for the ZBA, and.
Jeff is having difficulty getting in, he needs the, can't get the live link. Martha, can you send it to him in a text, in an email rather?
Yeah, so does he need, does he need the agenda to?
Yeah, he needs the agenda to click on the link.
Click on the link, okay.
Yeah. Can download it from the website.
Yeah, that would be, since I'm doing it from my home computer, it's a little trickier if he can go on the website to do it.
Okay, let me ask him.
That would be helpful.
That being the case, I'm just going to announce that we do have three public hearings that are supposed to start at 7:15. We're just going to delay their starting until we can get a little bit more of our Select Board in place.
Can we text Jeff the information so we can go on to his computer and just type the the information in so we can get online?
I think Alicia's contacting him now.
All right, until then, I'll do an update on conservation. Our last meeting, what's probably of most significance, is there's going to be some, some committee going to be working on a bylaw, and that committee, subcommittee will be bringing back to the commission. Hopefully, the next visit there, meeting was actually going on now, tonight, and I couldn't participate in that because we have this meeting here this evening. So that's what I can report of significance from ComCom. Great. So do we have Jeff on board?
We do have Jeff here, he just needs to unmute himself.
Oh, beautiful.
Great. Okay.
So Alicia, if you want to open your.
Yep. So sorry, let me gather myself here again.
Open your meeting and then we'll open.
So I am going to be Acting Chair tonight, and before I open the meeting, I want to confirm that all members of my Board are in attendance. I know JR Colby is not in attendance, I am in attendance, Jeff Walker? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And Michael Doyle?
Yes. Yes, I can.
And Geraldine Heavy, can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Can I, I want to entertain a motion to open our
Again.
Roll call vote, Jeffrey Walker?
Yes.
Only, Michael Doyle?
Yes.
Geraldine Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. So I need to read, Martha, can you screen share the the public meeting notice so that I can read it? Can we try that?
Yes. Are you able to see that?
I can now, yes.
All right, is it big enough?
Yep. Presidents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Select Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider a Water Supply Protection Overlay District Special Permit Application, submitted by Bavaro Family Realty, II LLC, for a new mixed-use building on property located at 3 Newburyport Turnpike, map R47 lots 38 and 39, in the Business and Light Industrial District, and in the Water Supply Protection Overlay District. The proposed development is shown on drawings entitled Proposed Site Plan for 3 Newburyport Turnpike in Newbury, Mass., dated July 15, 2020, revised October 5, 2020, and described in supporting documents, as all prepared by Millennium Engineering, Inc. for Bavaro Family Trust, II LLC. The application is on file with the Town Clerk and in the Office of the Select Board, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass. It may be viewed on the Town's website For more information or to obtain a copy of the application, contact the Select Board Office at 978-465-0862, extension 301, or by email at selectboard@townofnewbury.org. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development are invited to participate in the meeting remotely from their computer, tablet, or smartphone at https://us02web.zoom.us/ai/83271413056, or by telephone by calling 1-929-205-6099, US, and using meeting ID 832-7141-3056, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel, or at www.tncTV.org, submitted by JR Colby, Chair, the Newbury Select Board. Thank you, Martha.
Welcome.
Thanks, Alicia. So I'd like to open the public hearing for a site plan review application for 3 Newburyport Turnpike, map R47 lots 38, 39, owner, applicant, Bavaro Family Realty, II LLC, to be held concurrently with a Select Board public hearing of Water Supply Protection Overlay District Special Permit Application for 3 Newburyport Turnpike. Leslie, would you mind reading the public notice?
Sure, no problem. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December 2nd, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold, is this old?
No, it's December 16th, I'm not quite sure.
Yeah. Public hearing via Zoom to consider a site plan application submitted by KNR Construction Company.
Yep, that's not, I'm sorry, that's not the one, I'm not quite sure.
That's the one I got on the website. So would you like to share it with me, or is it?
It's up on the screen right now.
Okay. For my older eyes, could you make it a little bit larger?
Make it a little bit bigger here.
Thank you.
That went the other way.
You think the plus there, Martha, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Oh, great. Town of Newbury Planning Board Public Hearing Notice, Site Plan Review. Residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, December 16th, 2020, at 7:15 PM, the Newbury Planning Board will hold an online virtual public hearing via Zoom to consider a site plan review application submitted by Bavaro Family, II LLC, for a new mixed-use building on property located at 3 Newburyport Turnpike, map R47 lots 38 and 39, in the Business and Light Industrial District. The proposed development is shown on drawings entitled Proposed Sites Plan for 3 Newburyport Turnpike in Newbury, Mass., dated July 15, 2020, revised October 5, 2020, and described in supporting documents, all as prepared by Millennium Engineering, Inc. for Bavaro Family Realty, II LLC. The application is on file with the Town Clerk and in the Planning Office, 12 Kentway, Byfield, Mass., and may be viewed on the Town's website at https:// excuse me, double back, www.townofnewbury.org, backsplash, Planning Board, back pages, back current project applications and plans. For more information or to obtain a copy of the application, contact the Planning Office at 978-465-0862, extension 312, or by mail at planningboard@townofnewburyboard.org. All persons interested in meeting remotely from their computer, tablet, or smartphones at https double, what is, I don't even know what that's called, double backslash, US02web.zoom.us, backsplash, L back, 83271413056, or by telephone calling 1-929-205609, US, and using meeting ID number 832-7141-3056, or may watch the meeting live on local access cable channel 9, or at www.tncTV.org. Pete Pecos, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
Leslie, thank you very much, and as far as I'm concerned, you passed your driving test.
Thank you.
At least the I part of it, okay. Martha, I just want to confirm that we have all the green cards and about as notifications and tear sheets?
Yes, we did receive those, and those have been checked against the abouters lists.
Okay, wonderful. Who would like to present for us tonight?
So that is going to be TJ Melvin from Millennium Engineering. I've just, he needs to unmute himself, and I've just made him co-host so that he can screen share his presentation.
TJ, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, everyone. My name is TJ Melvin with Millennium Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant for the project located at 3 Newburyport Turnpike. Just pull the plans up here. So as mentioned in the legal notification, this is for a mixed-use building. Many people may remember this is the old circle finishing site that's been vacant for about 15, 20 years now. As we get down into the site plan, we have a one-way entrance to the site, as well as a one-way exit up actually in Newburyport. This triangle of the site here is actually considered 177 State Street in Newburyport. So we do have the 6,000 square foot footprint building, it's a three-story building. We're proposing 3,000 square feet of retail on the first floor, and 12,000 square feet of residential on the second and third floors. The plans that were originally submitted showed parking underneath the building. Based on comments we've received, we've kind of reconfigured the parking lot, and actually were able to remove the parking from underneath the building. And speaking with Martha earlier this week, I know there were some questions about what would be in there. We're proposing this kind of like a common space or storage for the residential units, but it will not be a residential unit itself, and likely there'll be a larger utility room in there to accommodate all the different services for the 12, or the 14 units, sorry. All of the stormwater for the site is directed towards the rear of the property, and there's a exfiltrating bio-retention area along the entire extent of the building. All the stormwater will be directed into, we have some trench drains on either side of the building, sent into a contact CDS pretreatment unit to remove all the TSS required, and ultimately into the bio-retention area. This bio-retention area is similar to a rain garden, has numerous different plants. There'll also be a stone trench in the middle of it to ensure that water does get recharged into the ground. All utilities for the site, water and sewer, will be through Newburyport. So we'll be pumping all the sewer back up to an existing sewer main here, extending the water main across our frontage, and Newburyport DPS has asked that we loop the water main across Route 1. So we will have, you know, both our domestic and fire services all coming from Newburyport. And so we kind of tried to hide the dumpsters as best we could. We have them located along the southern property line of the site. We will, we are showing a proposed sign for the development. And, you know, we have landscaping pretty much where we can, not a ton of lawn proposed at this point, just some kind of screening plantings. We do have site lighting proposed. I believe there are four lights along the building and three or four exterior light poles. Kind of a brief rundown of the project, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions either Board may have.
TJ, would you like to go through the rest of the drawings? Do you have those, just briefly?
Yep. Do you want the?
I think there's a landscaping plan, you've got lighting, there are architectures, which I know need to be revised.
Yep. Does that show the landscape plan for you now?
Yes.
Okay. So this is the landscape plan done by Kim Turner. So we have some, you know, screening plantings along the frontage, along Route 1, kind of some buffer plantings between the Domino's parking lot in Newburyport. Some additional plantings in this area. It doesn't show up on this plan, but I can switch back to the detail of this bio-retention area. It's pretty densely planted. Kind of a mix of different shrubs and other species of plant. So it's just a quick overview of the landscape. I can pull up the architectural. So again, this is the old layout for the building, showing the parking underneath, but it's just, you know, the first, the right half of the building will be retail, the residential floors. This would be the front view of the building. Again, this portion of the building will be changing through here. This will no longer be the parking. It's going to be the rear of the building. That's just the elevation cut section of the building. I believe that are, that's all the plans that we have to this point.
That's all I remember seeing. So is that it for your presentation?
Yeah, yeah, I can answer any, any questions either Board may have, or go and, and go into more detail about anything. Uh, yeah, yeah, I can answer any, any questions either board may have or go and, and go into more detail about anything that the boards may like.
Okay. Uh, Martha, I'm just starting with you before I start with the board. Uh, any comments of, uh, for the board before we get going with this?
Um, well, I thought maybe what I would do is just clarify, um, what the select board's role in, in this. Is it is a water supply protection, um, overlay, uh, district special permit? And so there, um, you know, their role specifically is to, that um, is triggered by the fact that it's, it's, um, increasing the impervious surface on, on the site um, to, uh, more than fifteen percent of the site or twenty-five hundred square feet. Um, and there are a couple of specific findings that they need to, to make with regard to groundwater recharge. And removal of contaminants. And in order to grant the special permit, they will need to find that in no way during construction or thereafter, the project, um, the proposed use must in no way during construction thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that's available in the Water Supply Protection District. And, uh, must be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. You know, as has been noted, this project or this site was previously occupied by circle finishing, which was destroyed by fire back in, um, I think it was, what, nineteen ninety-three? Um, the building was, uh, remaining structure was demolished in two thousand and two. The site went through a cleanup in two thousand and fourteen. So, um, you know, it's not, it's not an undisturbed site and it is at the southern end of the, uh, the traffic circle.
Okay, um, uh, T J, I might ask that you, uh, drop down your screen sharing at this point in time, just so all the board members can be able to see. Thanks very much. Um, I'm going to ask my board members at this point in time and I'm gonna kind of go down the list, uh, if anyone has any questions. Larry, do you have any questions, sir, at this point?
Yeah, if you could just clarify the number of residential and commercial units, what type of, uh, and in particular, um, the residential, um, how many bedrooms are going to be rental? Are they going to be condominium? A little more detail there.
Yep. Uh, so the original proposal that was submitted was for twelve residential units. Uh, we have since changed to fourteen. Uh, we're proposing one commercial retail unit on the first floor. Uh, and the units themselves are a mix of one, two, one and two bedrooms. Uh, and I believe the plan is to go condos at this point, um, but I'm not a hundred percent sure exactly if they're going to be rentals versus condos.
Thank you. I, I think that's all I have for now, Pete.
Okay, great. Thanks, Larry. Um, George, I'm going to come back to you in a second because I think you're coming at us from two technologies. Are you? I think you're muting on one of the two.
Yeah.
Um, we, you can hear you, George. Um, I think um, if the computer on you works or the phone on you works. There you go. Okay, George, you've got to change your computer. And I, you might want to disconnect your phone just so we don't, yeah, perfect. Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions at this point in time, George?
No, not at this time, not at this time, not at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Um, let me see. Uh, Leslie, do you have any questions at this mo, at this time?
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions. Um, circle finishing did, was a, uh, basically like a in the old, uh, old days, like hazardous waste type of disposal, you know, the, the type of work that they did. Um, what I'd like to know is, um, you're talking about one commercial space on the first floor. What kind of space will that be? What kind of, uh, trash will it, um, make? Uh, and will any of the residential, uh, units be in the forty B category?
Um, at this point, I believe it will be a, a retail type store, um, not, not really any manufacturing or, uh, anything like that.
Well, I'm, I'm, I think I'm looking at like, will it, um, drive like water and things like that? So will it be, uh, like a restaurant, um, that type of thing, which, you know, is, uh, uses a lot of water and energy and things of that nature versus retailers, um, you know, paper goods and, and textiles and things of that nature.
Yeah, I, I don't believe there's any plan for it to be a restaurant, uh, but I could, I could check with the applicant and report back to you.
Thank you.
As far as, sorry, as far as the forty B, um, I, I don't believe that they're going to be affordable rate units. Uh, I believe they are all going to be proposed to be market rate.
So in, in it, just to take a step further for clarification, that Newbury Port would be responsible for, uh, sewage and, um, garbage, um, disposal?
Uh, for sewage, for, for garbage, we do propose, um, two dumpsters on site.
And the two dumpster, dumpsters would be broken down into, uh, one be, would be regular household trash and the other one would be recycling?
Um, I wouldn't believe, uh, we haven't gone into that level of detail on the dumpsters, but likely there'll be, you know, a, uh, recycling and garbage both on site.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Uh, thank you, Leslie. Uh, Woody, do you have any questions at this time, sir?
No, I do not.
Okay, thanks. Um, at this time, I don't have any questions either. I'll just let the discussion continue. So Alicia, over to your board.
Okay, so, um, I'm gonna go through, um, the roster and ask if you guys have any comments or questions on what you heard. Gonna start with Jeff Walker.
Um, I wrote a couple of things down. Um, I think it's kind of sad that the fire doesn't seem so long ago. I must be getting old and I'm glad to see the property um, really going to get used for something constructive. My only thoughts might be, is the bio retention area large enough to handle all the stormwater cals and, and really all the roof runoff? And the only other thing would be, is it going to be gas for the heating and not oil?
Uh, yeah, so the bio retention area is sized to hold the hundred-year storm event. Uh, we're not proposing an outlet structure. Everything will ultimately drain into the ground. Um, I know we are proposing gas for a backup generator, but I believe the heat and A C are going to be wall-mounted units for each individual, um, unit. Uh, but no, we're not, it would either be gas if we were to change it from there. Um, but no, no oil is being proposed.
Thank you.
Okay, how about you, Mike? Do you have any questions?
I'm good right now. Thank you.
Jerry?
Um, yes. Um, in the, the latest documents we received recently this past week, um, it indicated that, um, you were negotiating with Newbury Port on the water and sewer. Has that been, um, firmed up? I mean, you're not, um, Newbury Port is okay with, with you tying into their water and sewer?
Uh, yeah, so we've, we've met with D P S. Um, the only hangup we're having right now is a question regarding the hazardous materials on the site. And, uh, they just want a third-party review that contamination can't enter the water system if there were a break in either of the water lines on site.
Okay.
But conceptually, no, they don't have any issues with us connecting.
Okay. And, um, as far as that, the, the removal of the contamination, um, is there still asphalt on the, on the property?
Uh, there, yes, there are some portions of the site that are still paved.
Uh, is that going to be removed?
Yes.
Okay. Um, okay. And, um, you increased to fourteen, um, uh, condos or apartments? Um, did you do that by, by making, you went from twelve to fourteen? So how were you able to do that? Did you make all of the apartments smaller?
Uh, so the architect is actually still finalizing the, whoops, sorry, go ahead. I'm sorry, I, I thought you were talking, um, the architects is act, is actually still working out the floor plans, but yeah, likely that some of the two-bedroom units will, or some of the, yeah, the, the, the larger units will be made smaller to accommodate the extra two, the extra two units.
Okay. And I guess my, my final question is, um, I, I saw the traffic study that was done in, in June of this year during the pandemic. Um, how accurate do you feel the traffic study would be since a lot of people were working from home?
Um, I would have to double-check to see what they base the traffic study on. Uh, they, they may have done it on other projects in the area, uh, but I, I can check into that and report back to you.
Okay, all right. And that, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Um, so I'm, I have a couple of questions, but before I, I ask them, I just want to, I think it's important to remind our board that, um, my board anyways, that this project, our role, the select board's role in this project is very specific to the, um, water, the, um, water overlay district and we have to make two findings. Um, we have to, the board has selected may grant the required special permit only upon finding that the proposed use meets the following standards. Um, and any regulations or guidelines adopted by the Board of Appeals, the proposed use must in no way during construction or thereafter adversely affect the existing or potential quality or quantity of water that is available in the Water Supply Protection District and be designed to avoid substantial disturbance of the soils, topography, drainage, vegetation, and or, uh, and other water-related natural characteristics of the site to be developed. Um, those are really, that, that's really our only role in this whole thing is to grant the special permit for this water overlay district. Um, now with me reframing that, does anybody else have any additional questions before we go down? Mike, is, is your hand up?
No, no.
Nope, you're good.
I'm good.
Okay, seeing none. Um, I just want to confirm that, um, and I don't know, Martha, if this is a question for you. Um, Newbury Port is concerned if they hook up to the, that anything leaches out of the groundwater into their water systems. Um, how can we be sure that the site is clean enough that it's not going to impact our water? This, uh, the water table for us? Is that something that maybe the applicant can answer or?
Yeah, T J, I don't know if you can address that. I mean, it did go through a cleanup process that was overseen um, by our Conservation Commission. There is a solution report that's in the, um, in the application package. And, um, you know, my understanding is that it was diseased, deemed, you know, substantially clean. Um, I don't know, you know, our, our water supply overlay district in that area is based on three potential water supplies that have been identified, one on the Bashaw property, one on Matt's property on, on Parker Street and one, uh, sort of under the elementary school. Um, so we haven't actually delineated any aquifer that might be impacted and I, it, I, so I can't answer whether the aquifer potentially goes that far.
Okay.
Um, yeah, just a, just a follow-up on Martha's point. Um,
Yes.
So a, a temporary solution statement was performed for the site. Uh, and the L S P has determined that there's no significant risk at the site. Uh, the contamination had happened, you know, over thirty years whilst you know, operating and after the fire. Um, but at this point, they've done some remediation, removed some of the underground storage tanks. Uh, and so at this point, we're kind of just in a holding pattern of, um, so it's a little bit above my expertise of what needs to remain to get a, a final solution statement. But it, it was determined by actually two L S Ps that there's no significant risk at, at the site. And Newbury's, uh, Newbury Port's concern was just if, you know, the water main did break, if it could somehow suck in contaminated soil that could alter the, the water system. Um, and again, we, we've had two separate L S Ps, both look at it and didn't seem to have a problem. Um, but, and well, now we'll have the third, uh, peer review to also confirm that.
Okay, and, um, is the Conservation Commission going to take a look at the water? Um, the way the stormwater system is designed? Yeah, and sign off on that?
Sorry, go ahead, Martha.
Oh, no, I was going to say, this is be, before the Conservation Commission. Pete, I can't remember when. I think they heard it and it's been continued.
Yes.
And they have received, um, you know, our, Joe Swatka's our peer review engineer's comments, you know, as part of, part of what they're considering.
Uh, just to summarize, uh, yeah, we, we, we've been in front of the Conservation Division, I believe it was three times. Um, and at the last hearing, uh, the only request that they had was that we swapped out some of the plantings in the exfiltration basin and relocate a couple of the parking spaces that were within twenty-five feet of the wetland. Uh, but other than that, I believe all the comments have been addressed to this point.
Martha, Alicia actually brought up a really good point. Is the construction going to be, you know, foundations of, of a soil is going to sustain those foundations? Are they going to have to drive any piles or any of, you know, anything like that? Because I think what Alicia said too, is construction really going to, you know, change the conditions or disturb things or release something into the water supply? Let alone, you know, the stormwater cals and the extra water and covering some of the properties, can that change it? But, you know, in the initial construction, are they going to be able, are they going to be really driving piles? And I mean, what, what do you expect it, you know?
Um, so we're proposing a slab, uh, foundation at this point. The soils on the site were sand with some clays down deeper, so there may be some type of pile that has to be driven. Um, again, that'd be up to the geotech engineer to determine exactly what they need for the foundation. Uh, but one stipulation that is provided in the temporary solution statement is that any excavated soils are to remain on-site as the soil is already contaminated and they don't want to drag it to somewhere else. So a, any soil that is disturbed has to remain on-site and, and kind of is replaced.
So, T J, have they done any sort of a, a load test to actually determine the bearing capacity of the soil?
Uh, we have not to this point. I know, um, uh, it's been looked at by others in the past, uh, but we, we have not conducted any.
But presumably, obviously, that does need to be done before the foundation is designed.
Yeah, yeah, and multiple different L S Ps and, uh, you know, soil scientists have been involved with the project, so it may have been done at some point. Uh, but not that I'm aware of.
Do we have a third-party review somewhere in the, in the, um, application of the way the stormwater is designed and, and to be able to, that the board could confidently, uh, find that in no way during construction or thereafter, um, if anything was adversely affecting existing potential quality or quantity of water? Is there anything, any third-party report for that to rely on, Martha?
Um, and we've got Joe's comments regarding, you know, the stormwater system as designed. It hasn't gone into, you know, uh, potential for contamination specifically. Uh, T J, does any of your third-party that, is any of that available to us?
Um, so Newbury Port has not assigned a peer review. Uh, they're actually doing it right now. Um, but I believe that they'll just strictly be looking at the effects of the, the soil at the elevation of the utilities. And if there's a potential that if anything were to happen, it could affect the system. Uh, but other than that, no, we haven't had a third-party review, uh, regarding the potential contamination.
So Martha, they don't have to sequester water at all, you know, with all that pavement and roof? I mean, the, the biodetention is going to create the timing and release of water that will be enough to to, uh, maintain all those. How much water suddenly gets released in a hundred-year storm to the wetlands?
I think that, that's, that's the design intent, as T J said, to basically contain the, the hundred-year storm. And I believe Joe has, has, uh, uh, reviewed those calculations, but I can, you know, I can double-check.
So I think that they can design their stormwater like So I think that they can design their stormwater like he's planning to do with the one hundred year storm, and I think that, I think he can do that. I think that's possible. I just, you know, it'll be peer reviewed by us. I, I, my concern, and I don't know how to, how to address it, is if there is disturbed land through construction and contamination leaches into the water supply district. I don't know how we can foresee that. Or foresee that it's just not gonna happen. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, and the, the problem is, is that a lot of the contamination is actually already there, prob- probably already in the groundwater or below groundwater elevation just from the thirty years that all the materials were getting released onto the site. You know, if, if we do have some soil disturbance, which most of the site we're actually planning on filling up about a foot, a foot and a half. So we're, we're trying to limit all the soil as we can. You know, in speaking with the, the second LSP we had talked to, he, he said that the, at least for the front portion of the site, the contamination actually starts at about groundwater level, which is about five and a half feet below grade. And most of the areas that we plan on doing any excavation would be, you know, within the top one or two feet, which is likely filled just that had been placed from the soil excavations that were, were performed as part of the remediation. Anything greater than that elevation will likely be for utilities, which the soil would just be disturbed, the utilities would be installed and then backfilled in. So it's not, it won't be a ton of, of land being pushed across the site and creating a huge mess. Like I said, most of the site will actually be filled by one to two feet.
Anybody else have any other questions on my board? Or comments?
I, I do.
Jerry?
In this, this may be not in our area that we're supposed to look at, but if you're talking about contaminated soil, how safe is it to put condominiums there?
Also, that, that had been evaluated by the licensed site professional, who has determined that there's no significant risk on the site.
So this is where my, my concern lies is that, I mean, they, they've, it's in the groundwater. It's, what, if they start disturbing it, will it leach? And I don't know how to, I don't know how to, I don't know how to, I, I really don't know how to move forward from that.
I think Alicia is actually, got two pivotal pieces that I'm a little, little hung up on too. Can this, can construction cause the ability for the water to translocate, you know, and go into the water supply? And will or could the extra water from the impervious surface cause the movement of water from the site to a more sensitive area? Trust me, I'm glad to see some construction there and I'd like to see it go forward. I, I would just like to know, and maybe Peter or Martha can answer it for us as a board, if we were to register our concerns and then go forward with, you know, saying we'd like to see it built. Does any of the planning board and conservation things that are set and followed that I've looked at or anything else, can, can, can they provide us with the ability to alleviate our concerns?
I, I have a question. All right. If I remember correctly, wasn't this an EPA superfund site that the government had to come in and clean up after circle burned down? And so that all, all or most of contamination had been removed?
That's what mine had been, that's what I thought. I thought it was a superfund site that was cleaned out totally. Because it was like, we, because we had one down.
I'm sorry, Mike.
There was one down Rawlsland at the, about the same time where the wildlife went. There were two superfund sites in the area. Okay, and it's like, I thank God that I didn't own that site because it costs a lot of money to clean that up.
That was a submarine, Michael, remember? It was, it was the submarine.
I know, not many people know that.
So.
Way we could, we can get the report from the cleanup people and then ask some questions because I don't think we have the answers tonight on what we're asking. You know, if we, if we construct there, will it be leaching? There's somebody out there that's gonna be qualified to answer that. We're not qualified tonight.
So TJ, Newbury Port, you said, is asking for a third party review. Can you give a little description of what they're asking?
Yeah, so they, they just wanted someone to evaluate the possibility that if there was a break in either of the services, that if it sucked in any of the soil, if the level of the VOCs in the soil would contaminate the water system in Newbury Port. I, I'm not exactly sure who they're hiring, if they're looking for an LSP, or if it's just gonna be a general civil review. Because we, we did hire a second LSP from the original that had done the temporary solution statement. And they determined that the, you know, level of contamination was about five and a half feet below existing grade.
So just so the public understands, can you explain what the acronym L S?
It's a licensed site professional. They're typically involved with these hazardous waste sites. It's kind of outside of a civil engineering
Right.
area of expertise and that's kind of their own niche of, you know, specialty in contaminated sites.
It's kind of, it's kind of funny that they'd be afraid of water because that's, that's the pressure side, isn't it?
Yeah, and that was kind of our, our thought process was, you know, we're gonna be above the level that they believe the contamination would be at. And then ultimately, they had asked that we get a third party review.
So I don't know, I'm thinking, I'm leaning towards, and my board can comment on this, asking you to provide a third party review for us so that we can, we can be comfortable when we approve the special permit for the, that this water, any activity that you do on the site won't be leaching into our water supplies. How does my board feel about that?
Unless Alicia, like my, my earlier question, unless somewhere within the purview of the planning board and site plan review, that's kind of taken care of in the construction plans. And I don't know the scope of that, Martha. Maybe you can answer that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have any, anything so far that's focused specifically on this question. You know, Joe's been looking at the stormwater management design as he would for, for any other site, but, you know, hasn't, hasn't been looking at it as far as I know in terms of contamination.
One, one thing I could offer also is if the hearing does get continued, I could ask that our LSP does attend the hearing and specifically address any questions the board may have.
Brilliant.
So I think that's a perfect direction to go in. I think both boards will probably continue this process. And I think these questions that you've been hearing, TJ, probably should be brought back and then kind of addressed. And then so at the next hearing, those concerns can be looked at. I think that'd be a good direction. What do you think, Alicia?
I think that's a brilliant idea.
Okay. If that's, okay, I'd like to see if there's any public comment at this time. Martha, so I'm gonna ask you to kind of help me with this because my screen's a little bit funky. I don't see any hands raised at this time. If there's anybody from the public who has a question or concern as to what's been said thus far, please do use the raise hand function so that we can recognize you. For telephone participants, we can use that star nine function. Any questions from the public at this point in time, please feel free. Look at those, otherwise we'll just continue along. I don't see anything.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything. I'm just gonna take a look and see if I see anybody waving a hand, which I don't.
All right. Are there any other additional questions from any planning board members? I just want to go down real quick. Larry? Okay, George?
No.
Okay, Woody? Leslie?
No.
Okay, okay, great. Over to you, Alicia.
Any further questions or comments from my select board? Jeff? Mike?
I'm good.
Jerry?
No.
Thank you. Okay, Pete, do you want to try to summarize and?
Yeah, I think so, since this is a new application, it's going between two boards. I think the boards have different roles in this process. And rather than the boards meeting jointly, I think would make, would make sense, Alicia. Let me know what you think about this, that they track separately so that the planning board could do its thing, you guys could do your component, and we can drill down the questions and concerns. Does that make sense with you, Alicia?
I, I think so.
Okay.
Because we're very specific in what we need to look at.
Yeah, I guess my only, my only question would be, since we've talked about having the licensed site professional come to the next hearing to talk about the contamination questions, whether both boards might want to at least
Hear that.
coordinate that one, and then possibly they can
Track.
act separately once those questions have been answered.
That's a, that's a great suggestion, Martha. So let, let's, can we pull up our schedule? Do you have that capacity so we can at least?
I will do my best to do.
Okay.
And Martha, any information that comes in beforehand relevant to that meeting, maybe get, get it to us too?
Oh, absolutely.
Please.
Thank you.
So we're gonna try to look for a mutual joint date. Martha's pulling up our planning board agenda just so we can see what things are looking at for our public hearings. We try to limit our public hearing, hearings to three. And even just because I do usually consume about forty-five minutes of time and we're, I think, at that threshold and a little bit beyond. So.
Can you see this? So we've got, yeah, we've got two on January sixth. We do have the golf center continuance for both boards on January twelfth. And then our next meeting after that is January twentieth.
So Martha, would it make sense to try to have a continuance of this with the golf center night? And try to get both greens at the same?
I think that's a good idea.
Yes.
Both have to meet anyway. This one shouldn't be as long as the golf center, maybe.
You got a lot of carriage.
Well, what we'll do, Jeff, is we'll just put time constraints on things.
Yeah.
Just to be clear for everyone. Matthew, comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think that makes sense, rather than trying to find another date. You know, we're already, both boards are already scheduled for this.
Yeah, right. That being the case, I would entertain a motion from a board member for the planning board for a continuance to the twelfth of January. I think our time will be seven fifteen, we'll be following.
Excuse me. It looks like I, we, we scheduled a selectmen's meeting at six to seven. That's what I had.
Hold on, let me look. So that's the Tuesday night, that's the select, so the select board would meet six to seven. The, what time, Martha, is the golf?
It was scheduled for seven fifteen, so I don't know, obviously, it's probably too early to know what you're, what's on your agenda, but, you know, would it make sense for you guys to maybe start at six, six thirty?
Well, we did, we planned to start at six.
Was that already, is that already scheduled?
Well, it was discussed. That's the plan because Tuesday night is the, it's seven, what did you say, seven fifteen?
Seven fifteen is what it was set for.
Yeah, we were gonna meet and have our regular board meeting. We can have a regular board meeting after, Mike. Jerry, Jeff, what do you think about that?
You mean, have the two meetings and then have our meeting after that? That makes it a late.
That could be really late.
Probably twelve thirty.
Yeah.
And what, what we've been doing is scheduling all public hearings for seven fifteen and just taking them in sequence so that there's no gaps if one, you know, finishes early.
It makes sense to have the selectmen's meeting at six o'clock, and if we happen to go too long, or six thirty, if we happen to go too long, we can finish it after.
Right, that, that makes sense.
That makes it. Is Tracy still on the phone? Does she, and Julie, are you guys okay with that?
I think she left.
Okay, well, let's, let's, let's make that our target, since we already have a continuance, so we can piggyback this on.
Does it work for the applicant, do you think, Pete?
TJ, is that okay with you?
Yeah, yeah, that's perfect.
Okay, perfect. I'd entertain a motion from my board for the continuance, please.
I'll move, we continue the public hearing until January twelfth, at seven fifteen PM.
Thank you, there's a second. Thank you, Leslie. Roll call, Larry?
Yes.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Chairs in favor as well, thank you. Leslie, I mean, Alicia?
So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing till.
Motion to continue the public hearing to January twelfth.
Second.
At seven fifteen. Roll call vote, Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes.
Great, great, thank you.
Should make sure it reflects back up, you know, through Tracy and everyone, that we're probably gonna meet at six or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Julie.
I'm still here.
Thanks.
Thank you, Julie.
Okay, Alicia, I think you can, are you good to adjourn?
Yep.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Roll call vote, Mike Doyle?
Yes.
Jeff Walker?
Yes.
Jerry Heavy?
Yes.
Alicia Greco, yes. All right, thank you all.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas, you guys.
Happy holidays.
Yep, you too.
Bye bye.
Bye.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll continue with the planning board, public hearings. The next hearing is going to be a continuance of a definitive subdivision plan application, twenty-three Shandell Drive Extension Map. UO six lot one twenty-four, one twenty-six, one applicant Scott and Patricia Kinter, lot one twenty-six, and Christopher and Shara Harrison, lot one twenty-four. This is continuing from November eighteenth, twenty twenty. Martha, do you have anything to bring the board up to speed on this one?
Well, I sent the, the first draft of the decision out to you all this afternoon and as well as to the applicant and his engineer, Bob Grasso. I've had a brief conversation with them about a couple of the waivers and conditions. So I, I guess the first question would be if there's anything else they want to present, and then if you would like me to screen share the decision and walk through it, we can do that and then have a discussion.
Okay, let's see if Bob has anything else that he wants to throw in at this point in time. Bob Grasso?
Good evening, my name is Bob Grasso from ELS. I'm representing Scott Kinter. And I did review Martha's draft. Everything looks great except for the waiver request. If Martha, if you want to put those up there, we can go right through those and have a discussion right through the waivers. I mean, that was the only, that's why we continue this hearing, just so we could draw for decision with the waivers. And it's on page three.
I'm just gonna try to make this a little bit bigger. Can you see this?
Yes, thank you, Grandma.
You're welcome.
All right, so on page three, the first one, basically that's just for environmental analysis, which is you can waive anything under certain, for single family dwelling, under a certain amount of lots, the board has the right to, has the authority to waive that environmental analysis, and we've also gone through the Conservation Commission with an order of conditions for the site. So I think that one's pretty much a case closed. The second one would be the hydraulic drainage calculations, the same thing. We've applied for the, a notion ten with the Conservation Commission got issued an order of conditions, and it's been filed. And so that should take care of that, that issue. The second one, Martha, requested to be added, the street location with a thirty-foot radius. Uh, the second one, Martha, requested to be added, the street location with a thirty-foot radiuses at the, um, at the cul-de-sac ends. And that's what we basically wanted a waiver for, because we're actually just extending Chandel Drive, the fifty-foot width, straight out. And then, um, just doing angles, straight angles. Uh, so the, uh, we're asking for the thirty-foot property radiuses on that. Um, the next one would be the general layout. Um, we're revising that to add the, uh, the pavement width from, from twenty-three feet, one twenty-two feet required down to fourteen foot, uh, which would be a driveway. Um, and the cul-de-sac turnaround diameter and cul-de-sac diameter, uh, divi- diameter of the row of the pavement. Because we're just basically extending Chandel Drive into a fourteen-foot driveway into our property. Um, the next, let's see. I think that's basically, oh, um, then the next one would be, uh, the typical cross-section. Uh, we want to waive that, because basically we're not waiving, uh, we're not building a roadway with all the required widths and trees and all that, uh, drainage wells. We're going to have drainage wells on our lots going into leech and catch basins, which we're showing on the site plan. Um, sidewalks, we're asking for that waiver. Uh, we're not extending any sidewalks. It's going to be a private way. It's just an extension of Chandel Drive. Uh, fire protection. Uh, we, we have town water, so that takes care of that waiver, and obviously that waiver is not required. Granite curbing, that would also fall into the cross-section. Uh, so we, we, we're basically building a driveway with drainage wells. Um, so we don't really need granite curbing. Street signs. There's not anyone that are going to be using the extension, except for Scott, for his lot, so it'd be a private way. So there's no need for saying, uh, Chandel Drive Extension, so we want to eliminate a street sign. Retaining wall, uh, grading, we're not going to have any, we're going to take that off. We proposed it. We're not proposing anything over three-to-one slope on the site, or in the, in the proposed right, private right-of-way. Uh, retaining walls, same thing, we're not proposing any grading that would, uh, require, um, slopes graded in three-to-one, you know, on the site, I mean, uh, in the, in the, in the right-of-way, the private right-of-way. And that takes care of the waivers. Sheet five, uh, she had a declaration of homeowner's trust, uh, you want to go to, or you want to go to the binder course first, or the security? Which, which sheet you are now?
Go back.
Um, the security. Um, under section one seventeen eighteen dash eight, uh, you can do a security, uh, through a bond, through the bank, through a check, or tri-pai-tai, uh, agreement. Um, I believe the applicant would, uh, either go through a bond through the bank, or put up a cash, um, deposit, uh, for construction, uh, for the utilities. Now, Scott, do you have anything to say on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I haven't, I haven't priced that, that work out, but, uh, I'm assuming, Bob, that, uh, the work, uh, that would need to be, um, uh, secured, uh, with either a bond or a cash, um, or with, or with cash, would be, uh, from the Newbury, uh, Newbury Port property line into, uh, my property line. So, uh, the utility connections, the driveway, you know, all of that work, I think, you know, uh, just, I am in the business. Um, you know, just, uh, looking at it, um, ballparking it, it's probably less than twenty grand. Uh, and if it is, uh, it would make perfect sense for me, uh, you know, to, to, to do a, a cash bond versus, um, um, you know, a bank bond. So, uh, either way, um, you know, whatever that cost is, whatever we agree it to, uh, it, it to be, uh, I'm happy, uh, either way to, um, uh, do what the town would like.
Okay. Um, the next one would be the declaration of the homeowner's trust. Uh, that would be in the private way, which would be privately owned by Scott and the homeowners, the homeowner of the lot. And the only thing that Martha, uh, Martha mentioned would be the snow, um, piling for like Newbury Port, pushing snow up Chandel Drive towards the Leech and Catch Basin. Uh, Scott can get, um, an agreement with them, that he would give them an easement, uh, to dumps, you know, to store snow piles onto his, um, private way. Uh, we can supply that, um, from the, uh, Scott can supply, uh, some type of, uh, easement with the, with the Newbury Port, DPW, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Bob, so that would be either a, uh, an easement or a license, um, or, um, just a, uh, or an agreement. Um, and, uh, the agreement would be, uh, in perpetuity. Um, so, um, you know, that's, uh, that's, um, uh, we, we'd be agreeable to that.
Okay. And the next thing that Martha had highlighted would be the binder course. Obviously, Scott would construct a, um, uh, driveway per the planning board's, uh, can, you know, standards for a driveway. Uh, it's going to be fourteen feet wide with, uh, side shoulders with swales on the side. Um, and the next number three would be the utilities. Uh, it says that to be inspected by the board's review engineer and approved by the board prior to any application for occupancy permits. That would be, um, I think that would be mostly in Newbury Port. All the, all the services would be coming, the water, the sewer, would be coming from the Newbury Port, and Scott can get letters from approval from the construction uh, going into his private way. Because they'd be supplying the water source, they'd be taking the sewage from, from the site. If, if Scott could supply, um, some, you know, approval letters saying that was, it was installed and inspected by the Newbury Port, uh, town officials.
Yeah, so how that would work, Bob, would, uh, you know, we'd, uh, we'd, of course, uh, need to get, you know, a permit from Newbury Port, uh, after plan review. Again, they'd review the plan, issue the permit, uh, you know, we would, uh, utilize, uh, an approved contractor in the city of Newbury Port. Um, you know, they would, um, you know, my contractor would, uh, you know, execute the construction on the water and sewer, uh, utilities, uh, manholes, uh, connections, uh, Newbury Port, um, due to, uh, it, uh, you know, I'd be, uh, responsible to be paying uh, usage on, on water and sewer. So they not only would be, um, inspecting, reviewing, inspecting, uh, you know, connections on the street, Chandel, and Newbury Port, uh, but they'd also be, uh, uh, inspecting, um, you know, the services of the house. Uh, so you would get, uh, a letter of compliance, uh, from Newbury Port, uh, which of course would be, um, um, necessary uh, to provide, uh, documentation to Newbury, um, more than likely, uh, really at the, um, uh, certificate of occupancy stage or phase.
All right, other than that, I agree with Martha's draft.
Okay, uh, thanks, Bob, and thanks, Scott. Um, Martha, are there a lot of loose ends here, or am I just?
Um, well, going back to the beginning, there are some loose ends in terms of, some blanks to be filled in, in terms of, of, uh, uh, some of the information that received that are part of the record of the public hearing. Not a lot, but just a few. I don't think we actually received any written comments from, from residents. We had some comments during the public hearing itself. So I think most of it is covered. I just want to double, double-check that we've got a, a full record. And the other, other thing I was going to do is just take one more look through, uh, through Joe's comment letters, to see if there were any conditions that he had suggested that should be included in here.
So, there'll be a little bit more kind of review on Joe's comments for this. Okay, um, any other concerns?
I think, Peter, I think Joe's comments were all addressed.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Okay.
And, yeah, and I expect they probably were every, although sometimes there are, are things that aren't necessarily, uh, things that would be changed on the plans in response, but, but, uh, other sort of, um, procedural or that, that type of, of condition that he, he suggests from time to time, so.
Okay, all right. Um, let me ask, uh, if the board members have any comments on this first draft. Uh, George, I'm going to start off with you. George, do you have any questions or comments on this first draft that we have?
I don't, thank you.
Okay, uh, Leslie, do you have any questions or comments on this first draft?
Um, just clarification for anybody that's, uh, watching, uh, this evening, when it refers to utilities, those are municipality utilities and not utilities across the board. Going on to the properties such as electric or gas or what have you, which would be, uh, the ones that Bob has mentioned earlier.
Right, I mean, all the, all the references to the utilities and the application materials were, were that they would be coming from Newbury, Chandel Drive, from Newbury Port. So it's a Newbury Port municipal water and sewer system, and then gas and electric would be also coming in from Chandel Drive.
So that would also be a, a Newbury Port utility?
Well, it's not, they're the, they're the, the service providers, whether it's National Grid and for both.
Yeah, and they install their own services, so.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Woody, do you have any comments or questions on this first draft?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, I don't know if Larry is back with us. Um, okay, um, so I don't have any questions. I just want to, uh, Martha, I just want to see, uh, would you feel comfortable if we, if we, um, uh, approve this with, with filling in the components that need backfilling with us? Would you, uh, feel comfortable?
No, um, I, I would certainly be comfortable with the, um, you know, filling in that, the record of the hearing. The only thing that would concern me is if there was something that, um, an additional condition or something that the board hadn't had an opportunity to consider.
Okay. Um, so I, I guess the question to, to, to the board right now is whether we want to, uh, uh, close this, or if we want to continue it, uh, till any loose ends are concluded. Um, so with that question being posed, George, what do you think?
Uh, most of the questions left open seem pretty benign. Uh, I have no problem doing that, although I would like to see a, a my date, by date that somebody else, if they have a problem, raises that to the board as soon as possible for consideration.
Okay, thanks. Um, Leslie?
I think I have to agree with George on that one, too. You know, it's like somebody, they can let them come forward. Um, so, I mean, e- everything sounds pretty much in order, but we'll kind of just hold on, uh, until some, somebody speaks up for a date.
Okay, Woody?
I feel comfortable with, uh, moving on and closing this, uh. I agree with George and Leslie in the sense that everything that needs to be addressed is minimal. And, uh, that, the only thing is if Joe had any conditions that we might want to consider, but otherwise, I, I feel fine with moving on.
Um, I don't think Larry's back with us as of yet. Um, okay, so now I have a administrative question. Martha, if we do close this, um, and we do bump into a question, a question or concern down the road, how would that be handled?
If it was substantive, I think we would have to, you know, potentially reopen if it's closed. And I will say, I think, you know, given, given two things, one, the, the project itself is, is relatively minimal, which in a sense makes this a more complicated process than usual, because we can't, you know, use all of our sort of standard template stuff. And, um, the Conservation Commission order of, of conditions is, is something that also is, um, you know, sort of in play here in terms of the, the conditions that they've already set, and those are incorporated, you know, by, uh, by reference. So, um, so I, I don't anticipate that there would be anything substantive, but I can't, you know, I can't guarantee.
Yeah. Okay, um, all right, I'm, I'm just going to touch base with Larry. I know that he just popped back into our discussion. Larry?
Yeah.
We're, we're at the crossroads here. There might be a couple, um, loose ends that might need to be tidied up with this. I know the applicant wants to, um, go forward, and so I wonder if you have any concerns with this continuing, uh, down the path with allowing Martha to do any administrative, uh, modifications that might be necessary, so that we would, uh, allows this to go forward and close this hearing?
Yeah, no, I, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Cool.
Um, that being the case, let me see if there is any final public comment out there?
Should I take this down?
Uh, no, you can leave it up.
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just going to kind of look down through the public comment. I don't see any, uh, you, you might need to do that, so we can take a look at folks, just in case there's any wavy dance. Okay, super, and I'm just going to minimize that. Um, I don't see anybody with any public comment or concern. Do you, Martha?
I do not.
Okay, that being the case, um, I would entertain a motion to, um, approve the draft decision, uh, with administrative corrections as deemed appropriate by, uh, staff, um, and to close this hearing.
I'm moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Woody?
Yeah.
Yes, Leslie?
Yes.
Thank you, and the chairs in favor as well. Okay, Martha, do you need any further direction from us?
Uh, no, I think I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Bob or Scott, any questions or concerns?
Uh, just want to thank you for your time and dealing with this crisis. Um, I know you guys are very busy, uh, busy schedule, and I just want to thank you for your time.
Great, thanks, Bob, we appreciate that.
Yeah, and, uh, and I, I'd have to, I have to say the same thing. Uh, um, you know, hats off to you guys. You guys, uh, do a great job, and, um, you probably should be, uh, more recognized. I mean, this is, uh, crazy times. Uh, doing it virtual is, uh, it's, uh, extra difficult, so, uh, great job. I appreciate, uh, all the guidance, uh, from planning, especially Martha. Um, uh, you've been a, a big help and a great public servant, and, uh, appreciate it. So happy holidays, and thank you very, very much.
Thanks, Scott, and stay in touch with Martha, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Happy holidays to you, too.
Okay, thanks very much, folks. Okay, um, so we're.
We need a vote to.
Was it, yep. I'd entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close the hearing for Chandel Drive.
Thank you, Leslie, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Woody, uh, roll call. Okay, and, uh, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
All right, George, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie, how say you?
Yes.
Woody, how say you, sir?
Yes.
And the chair is in favor as well. Wonderful. Beautiful. Continuing on with our public hearings, we're looking at eight thirty-two. We have a continued public hearing for an open space residential development, OSRD, special permit application, one oh five High Road. MAP R forty-eight lot forty-nine owner, author, and Sandra Costanzas, applicant to Piero LLC. This is continued from November eighteenth of twenty twenty. Okay, let's see where we're at. Okay, is there, do we have any new materials to be presented by the applicants? Is, is there someone who's going to speak tonight for the applicant?
Good evening. Jill Mann here on behalf of the applicant, and I do believe there were, there was an additional set of documents submitted by DCI, Steve Sawyer, on behalf of DePiero Properties.
Martha? Yeah, 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 we did submit several, several plans, some renderings, updated site plans. I don't know, Martha, if you'd like, I can screen share.
Yes, I think that would be, well, I'll ask the board, but yes.
And I can just go through some of the items and the reason for the resubmital while Steve's doing that. As the board knows, we are seeking an OSRD plan, and originally we had had, based on my discussions and representation of the petitioner, we had actually proposed to the board a change in the number of lots that were permitted by right. You know, I was asked to optimize the property, and I did so by creating or asking Mr. Sawyer to create a twelve-unit plan that, in my opinion, conformed to the rules and regulations of subdivision control for the town, as well as the zoning bylaws. I reviewed the civil plans, and based on that, there was the development of a twelve-unit plan that, again, in my opinion, shows a by right use. That's something we're going to discuss later. That's on the agenda for preliminary plan. Notwithstanding that, the petitioner listened to the concerns of the board, and on the November eighteenth meeting opted to continue in order to try and bridge the gap. The gap between what the developer has is a financial operational interest and need in developing the property, and the board's desire to preserve open space and to take density to a level that it believed was more appropriate. Based on those concerns, that was the result and the, or I should say that was the reason, and the result is the current yield plan that is being offered. So the petitioner is seeking an OSRD and is seeking an eleven-unit OSRD, ten of which would be based on a yield plan. So essentially, Mr. DePiero opted to reduce the yield plan from its by right use to a ten-lot use. Steve, can you do that for me? Can you show that plan, please? It wouldn't be bad if you showed the color. It's, oh, there we go. You're gonna do the yields. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
There we, yeah, so here we go. So, yeah, so this was basically the board seeing this, and I think there was a concurrence that this was a reasonable and acceptable yield plan for the project. Jill, sorry, go on.
So basically, in order to resolve the acrimony, because the petitioner really did not want to cause as many issues as had been caused, he opted to submit this ten-unit yield. As you can see, it, it is, well, you can see it. You've seen it before, and this is something that deviates somewhat from its by right use, but this is what they're opting to submit as part of their OSRD. And for the record, this would be what he is requesting for the basic minimum and/or yield. Essentially, Steve, would you mind going then and showing the OSRD plan, please? So basically, what we had done was we created the OSRD plan based on a desire to have eleven units. This particular plan would, would retain the shared septic system, and it would allow there to be a full compliance with Lisa Mead's directive, or I shouldn't, I apologize, Lisa Mead's interpretation, this was adopted, I believe, by the board relative to the open space.
Excuse me, Jill. Hold on a second. But I, I'm sorry, I'm gonna jump to the next plan. This, here's, here's the plan. This plan complies with the interpretation.
It didn't, it complies, but so does the other one, because we're just bringing more. So it's like, it's not a strict compliance, but in my opinion, you could deem it to be compliant, but we can, yes. So anyway, for the board's purposes, what we are required to do pursuant to your bylaw is to show open space that has fifty percent of all the upland. So the total amount of upland relative to the project is five hundred and thirty-two thousand. I'm just gonna round numbers, so I'm gonna say the big numbers, not the little ones. So five hundred and thirty thousand on square feet. So that means there's a requirement that we provide, we being the petitioner, provide a plan that shows open space of two hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet. Of that, the total amount of, see, see, this gets confusing because I'm not looking at the, okay, the plan. But we ended up, what we're going to offer to the board, and the plan that is being proposed by Mr. DePiero actually provides for the board three hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet of upland in the open space. And this basically is how we end up deriving our bonus, because pursuant to the bylaw, it states that if you provide in excess of fifty percent of the required open space, which is fifty percent of the upland, you are entitled to an additional unit. So essentially, instead of providing just the minimum two hundred and sixty-six thousand, we provide the two, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, which is sixty-one percent of the total upland of the property, thereby yielding an eleven percent bonus, if you will, for upland. The open space must have contiguous area that is at least fifty percent of the open space. So based on what would be required, we do provide for that. The, the large amount of contiguous upland is actually two hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square feet, and that is what's provided, despite the fact that we provide upland of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So we do meet those basic requirements as far as technical compliance would go. And that's why we are seeking a bonus of one lot, because we are providing far more contiguous upland than is required, and we are providing, I apologize, we're providing more upland than is required, and we are meeting the contiguous upland requirement of the bylaw as interpreted by Leo Counsel. As you can see, the eleven lots are spaced appropriately on the plan. Mr. Sawyer did provide for you all of the density, and he shows the open space, the amount of area within each lot. And you can see, okay, there you go, Steve. Thank you. I mean, I know, it's impossible for you to see on the screen. I realize that. I assume that everybody has received copies. If you need us to blow it up so you can see it better, please let me know. But at this point, I don't know if you would like to speak more about it. I mean, as you can tell, we did make great strides to reduce the issues that the board was finding, which was we went from a request to do, to have thirteen to a request to have eleven. Again, we do meet with those bonus entitlements under the bonus levels that are provided for under the bylaw. And we would entertain any questions from the board. But again, this was a, a very lengthy process and several meetings, several, several plan revisions by Mr. DePiero in, in an attempt to basically come to an agreement with the board.
Um, hey, Jill, what, I think it might be appropriate that I just take five minutes and just run through each sheet.
I would like that very much. Please do.
Okay. So basically, submitted five plans to the board last week. I think we, we had this rendering submitted previously. I think that we, I think we updated it. I think that it's been an update. We put, took the barn, pushed that back. So as far as a view from, from High Road, there's really minimal change in the appearance. The new private road will enter to the left of the existing house up on High Road. The barn is pushed back. So looking down the driveway, really, you, you see the barn in the house, but the barn now is a little more forward, but it'll be pushed back and, and, and set down the slope a little bit. So this is the appearance of the new roadway as it intersects with, with High, with High Road. We've updated the landscape rendering to show, to show how, to show how the site falls, you can see up on High, High Road at elevation sixty, eye level here. As you look down towards the, towards the subdivision, the new, the new development, the, the grade falls away. You can see the riding ring at the abutting property to the left in screen back, and then the road drops down to the end of the cul-de-sac here. And an important fact with this proposal is we're providing a third, basically a third of this lower field as open space. There's no homes down, you know, pushed to the rear. Most of, all the homes are pretty much brought forward of this, forward of this large riding ring. There's another large riding ring structure that'll show on a plan subsequent from, from this.
Steve, I'm just gonna interrupt you for a sec. Kate, Larry?
Yeah.
Can you just drive for a couple of seconds?
Uh, sure.
Thanks very much.
What would you?
I'm okay. Am I all set to go?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Okay, all right. So then, uh, we actually already reviewed this. The accepted, the yield plan, as we're gonna be submitting for this, it's the ten-unit, ten-unit yield. Uh, and here is our, oh, it's ID, that's the engineered plan with all the lot areas. With this plan, we're providing actually at sixty-two percent upland open space, so a twelve percent over the upland area. The overall open space is seventy-one percent. To be honest, it's not clear, and the regulations just says for every, every additional ten percent of open space, you're entitled to a bonus lot. So it's unclear whether we'd be allowed two or one. We're just saying one, because it's the upland area on this. And once again, very important fact is that we're providing this entire lower third of the field, the, the lower field area is open space. And here are the large riding ring structures adjacent to it, adjacent to the property to the north. You can see these, these are massive structures, and you can see basically the homes, other than the nose of this last home, they're all set towards High Road. So as far as the impact of this lower, this larger lower field area in the woods, there's, there's really no impact to the visual. And as noted before, on the, on that site section, as you look down, as you look down the road, you really, it'll be tough to see these homes from High Road. You have a home here that screens it, that, that shields the homes from below, from, from above. And then the road tucks around and curves. You have the barn here. You'd probably see some of the roofs of these buildings, but, uh, the, the new homes. But as the grade falls away, it dramatically hides or shields those, the view from High Road. And then finally, this, I think this graphic is done to solidify the fact that, I, I know there were discussions about the waiver needed for the contiguous open space. So basically, what this plan does is, okay, if we, if we don't ask, if, if we're not asking to waive this contiguous up, upland open space, this is what your development area would look like. Unfortunately, we get penalized for providing too much open space with, with, with our proposed design. And then by doing this, you end up pushing homes all the way down to the field. As, you know, the, the numbers on this plan is in strict compliance of the open space regulations. We have, as Jill had mentioned before, we have fifty percent of the land is total open space. And then the other item you need is contiguous open space. Our total, so you take the total open space, which is forty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight. We have to provide fifty percent of that of contiguous open space. That's directly taken from the, taken from the opinion letter is, and that's exactly what we provide. So what, kind of what dictates what you can give for open spaces is contiguous area here. You basically double it, and that's all you can give. And then we take the rest for development, and we comply with the regulations. So I, I think it's, it's a benefit. It, it's definitely a benefit to give up this lower third area and provide additional ten percent upland, and, you know, and then providing a full seventy-two percent of open space. I think that wraps it up, and I'll turn it back to Jill.
Can I ask for clarification at one point before we go on? You, you're showing on your plan, you've got five hundred and thirty-two thousand and eight square feet of total upland land area, which includes the developed area, correct? Now, this two twelve eight ninety-four, the contiguous part represents about forty percent of that five thirty-two. So I understand your position is that only fifty percent of the open space upland need be contiguous?
No, actually, what, if you read the opinion letter, it says it, it's, I guess, at least
I'm asking your interpretation. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Actually, if you're asking for my interpretation, my interpretation is that the wetland bifurcating the open space by wetland doesn't, doesn't constitute it to be non-contiguous.
All right.
My interpretation, but we're, we were asked to respond to the legal, the town's legal counsel.
All right, let, let me ask Brian Winter. Brian, are you, and you comfortable with this interpretation?
Just make sure I'm not muted. So, no, is the, the long and short answer. I see the highlighted portions on the top of the key of the plan, but those are two sentences out of a three-page letter, and there are other sentences that speak to other aspects of the bylaw. And if you trace it back to the reasoning in the bylaw, that, that's not the same conclusion I reach. And I'm not trying to get the, the board or the applicant bogged down in this, because we have other things I'm sure we need to talk about. But I'll just direct your attention to the last full paragraph on page two. It's the last sentence. This is of Lisa Mead's opinion letter. These various sections interpreted together are indicative of an intent that the open space does not include wetlands. So when you're talking about the fifty percent of the development plan not including wetlands, that part isn't on your, your notation here. So I think a piece of the puzzle got missed.
So I, I guess, can, can you explain to me then, based on this? I mean, the way I, I, I agree with, I, I thought I was interpreting properly. So according to the bylaw, it says fifty percent of the open sp, fifty percent of the upland in the total area must be included in the upland. I mean, I apologize, in the open space. So the total amount of upland is basically, total amount of upland is five hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. So that means there's a requirement that we have two hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet of upland in the open space. Then I looked to, which is that? Okay, now I look to the actual opinion, and it says fifty percent of the open space must have contiguous upland. So when I
Jill, I'm sorry to interrupt, but where do you see that?
Pardon me? I'm sorry.
Where do you see that?
Okay, so it, it, right on this plan, it would be the very last highlighted provision.
No, no, no. Where do you see that in the bylaw?
Oh, sure. So if you go to your bylaw on page, it's, I can't, it doesn't have page numbers. I apologize. Exception twelve, open space. I don't
A and, and one. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
No, please, I appreciate it. So you see a minimum of fifty percent of the upland shown on the development plan shall be open space.
All right, that's the five something, right?
So the total open, oh, I keep making, I tell you, I'm getting tired, obviously, and getting old. So the total upland is five hundred and thirty-two thousand square feet. Fifty percent of that is two sixty-six.
Right, so don't you need two sixty-six of contiguous upland?
No, because that's, by the way, it's impossible to do that with this particular area unless we literally reverse the subdivision. There's no intent to tell you that a, a space can't be developed at all, because you don't, you have intermittent wetlands hitting it. It's just about what your consistency is of the upland. It, it would defy any, any reasonable interpretation of an open space. So the upland amount is supposed to be fifty percent of what's in open space, and that's what's said in the, in, in the letter. And I agree with that. I'm like, okay, so whatever we provide for you for upland, we must ensure that no less than fifty percent of that is contiguous. So that makes abundant sense to me, because you're trying to make sure, look, you can't, you can't take all of the wetland and dump it in and not give us contiguous open space or open space that isn't usable. So that's the purpose. So the first hurdle, fifty percent of all upland, okay, two hundred and sixty-six thousand square feet must be included. We comply with that. The next hurdle is that fifty percent of that two sixty-six must be contiguous, which means we really are only supposed to have, have only supposed to have, have as far as contiguous area, you know, a much lesser amount. What is that, 160 something? But we actually provide for contiguous area of 212-834. We provide for more and, and it, you know, that's how we end up doing it, but we can, we can, and then you're supposed to say, if you really go into a different definition, you say, okay, now the open space has to be 50% contiguous upland, then that kind of, I don't think that's what Lisa meant because that would mean I limit the amount of land I can give you and I would have to cut off conservation land. So I think what she really meant to say was give more, but you can't give less. I think that's really the intent, because if you go through all the steps, we meet them.
If, if, if you look at the calculation, if say thus based on the board's interpretation, the open space must be comprised of 50% contiguous uplands. So if we just say, okay, we take this contiguous upland and then our total upland open space, we're actually at 80%. If you just, if you're just including the, the total open, the, the total upland, you know, basing it on the total upland open space, we go from 50 to 80% contiguous.
All right, well, you know, the, we, we've talked about this before and I, I, I'll freely admit that, that I, I find the subject somewhat, somewhat hard to grasp. But really the question comes down to whether or not you've met it or whether or not the board would be required to, you'd need a waiver from the board. I don't want to spend too much time on this because as Brian pointed out, we have other issues and I see the chairman's back, so I'm gonna.
And if we had to meet the interpretation, we can do it by, believe it or not, reducing the amount of space we give you, that's not our intent. That's just not our intent.
Let, let's.
To give that larger space.
You, you have, well Pete, do you want to?
Oh, go ahead, Larry.
Go on.
Yeah.
As far, as far as the. You have two concept plans here, which is that you want to go with?
I'm sorry, I know. So.
Yeah, this is our.
Want to go for is, is the one with the more abundant open space. I, we apologize, we were trying to give as much information as we could and sometimes that's too much, right? So is sheet C105 that shows the large open field to the rear of the cul-de-sac plus the open space? Mr. De Perro did not want to cut back the amount of open space in that foreground, if you will, he wanted to make it larger. That was his desire.
Okay, so we can agree that we're going forward with the plan shown in C105.
Correct.
Yes, and Mr. De Perro is online if he wants to add anything. Okay.
No.
Yes.
And I guess lastly would be, well, not lastly, but we probably ought to talk about the, the 10 unit yield plan. Does any of the board members want to weigh in on this?
Can you put that up there for him? Steve, can you put the 10, the yield? Thank you.
Anyone have any questions?
George, do you have any comments?
Yes, I do, and I'd like to pass on to Brian Winner. How would you define the word contiguous in relation to the open space that we're looking at above the plan?
You mean going back to the, the plan that was just up? Well, so that's why I referenced the entirety of Attorney Mead's opinion because there's more than just a couple of sentences in there. There's the three-page letter and it gets into that. And on the second page of that opinion letter, it talks about what's included and excluded in that contiguous upland. And the continuity proper proportion of it excludes wetlands. So I, I think you have to look at the whole thing as a whole and not individual parts in a vacuum to get, to get that answer, George.
Thank you.
But we have agreed when we worked on the plan to follow Attorney Mead's suggestion that contiguous means not intercepted by wetland for upland. So we, we, when we tell you it's contiguous, we mean not, not areas separated by wetland.
Okay, so Larry, I guess your question was, how does, how do the board members feel about this yield?
Right.
Is that what we like?
I mean, this, I'll share my, my thinking. It, it's, it's still not what you would see, I would characterize as a classic subdivision plan. And I, I think if this were brought before us, we would probably want to work with the developer to perhaps come up with, with something a little more palatable. But it, it doesn't have the infirmity of the 12 lot yield plan at least. In fact, this strikes me, this plan, and I'm probably getting into too far into the weeds here, but this, this, if you were going with this plan as, as your, the plan that you were proposing to build, it would be more appropriate as a condominium or something like that to get rid of all those crazy lot lines. You know, that said, I, I can't, I can't identify any reason to reject this as a yield plan. And, you know, I, I think in my own feeling is, is we have enough here where we can at least move forward and start talking about the merits of the, of the special permit.
Okay, thanks Larry. George, your feeling on the, this yield plan as kind of an acceptable or non-acceptable yield plan?
I would love to get the word contiguous stricken, which you really can't. And in one area, one is completely separate from the other, it is not contiguous, I'd love to see this plan work. I think it's a good use of it the way it's designed, but there's a flaw back there that has to be satisfied somehow. And that's why I went to a council and also to Lisa Mead's letter, which really had to define on what that means. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Leslie, on, on this yield plan, do you find this to be an acceptable yield plan?
I just want to get a better understanding on the 11, lot 11. So does that eliminate the original plan that was more to give the public access to a walkway into the, the back area of the properties?
So what we want to first get to before we get to, I think, the OSRD, Leslie, would, I just want to really get a feeling for if people think that this is a yield plan, because if it's a yield plan, then we can go to the next step. If it's not a yield plan, then we can't go to that next step. So I want to get back to this question about, do you think that this is an acceptable yield plan?
I'm not actually comfortable with it, no.
Okay, all right. Woody, I'd like to ask you that same question, sir.
I can't say I'm entirely comfortable with it either, but I, I do have concerns, like George said, on the continuous, but what do you consider, do you consider a continuous upland or not? I, I don't know, couldn't, let me think about that for a minute, Peter.
Okay. Um, Jill and Mark, we appreciate your trying to work with the board and to get to a point where we continue the dialogue. You know, this brings us back to, I think, a conversation that we had some time ago with this being a yield plan that could work. And I think Larry articulated, if this came of and by itself, we'd probably want to tweak it, tweak it, tweak it, because it's not the most comfortable thing, especially when we see the stuff going on backwards. And I know that it currently would address the, the, the call out for a yield. With that said, of the yield plans that have been submitted, this is the most palatable of the yield plans. So there can be a gentle smile on your face, Jill, so let me see that. Okay. From my perspective, so I think to answer Larry's starting point question, that, that's where we need to figure out if, if, if we can, if we can go further from, from here. So with the, with the reservations and constraints, I've said, that's where I'm at. So I don't know if I want to go back to Woody to see if he's had an opportunity to answer the question as to whether he thinks this is a yield plan he can live with or not.
This is better than some of the other plans I've seen, so I, I will agree with that.
Okay. All right. So I, I think at least we have a kind of a feel for that. Martha, do you have any additional information that's been submitted that we need to know about?
We have received several emails since the last, well, the continued public hearing on the November 18th. If you'd like, I can bring up that, the list just to read off the names of people that we've heard from.
Okay, that'd be great, thanks.
All right. Oh, I'm afraid to do that, Steve, you're gonna have to stop sharing.
Oh yeah, sorry, yeah, stop sharing.
I can't share at the same time.
No, I'm not giving out the screen.
Technology, the control of the screen, Steve, okay.
Let's try this again. All right, so are you all able to see this?
Yes.
Right.
No.
Make it a little bit bigger. So this is a listing of all the, all the public input that we've gotten so far as well as, as board and town input. And on this side, we've got, we've got the, the list of people who have expressed concerns or opposition to the project. And since November 18th, we've received emails from Kendra Boparla, Nancy Soward, Angel Boparla, Carol Rice, Will Roberts, and Chris and Bonnie Simpson, all expressing opposition to the project. And those have all, I think they've all, Chris and Bonnie's came in just this morning, all the others are up on the website.
Great, thank you, thank you Martha. So everything is, is available and posted so people can review it. Okay, that being the case, what I'd like to do is I'd like to see if there's any public comment and what we're looking for is we're looking for new information that will help the board. We've had a lot of information, a lot of submissions of comments from public, so I'm looking for any new information, new comments to the board that would be helpful in this, in this discussion. So let me see, Martha, if you have the opportunity to peruse with me to see if there are any hands up or any individuals indicated that they have new information that they want to submit to the board.
I'm not seeing any raised hands. Catherine is physically raising her hand.
Okay, Catherine, Catherine, so if you have any new information that you want to submit to the board, we'd like to hear that, thank you.
And you'll have to unmute yourself, Catherine.
All right. Thank you. I have a few questions actually, from people that have emailed to me, questions they'd like me to ask. First question is, have members of the planning board read all of the letters that have been submitted? They're on the website. If you have read all the letters, would you be kind enough to just acknowledge that by raising your hand?
So you'd like me to poll the board to see if they've read the materials that they've received prior to the meeting? Okay, I can do that.
No, 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 all of them, there's a lot of them.
Right, so the, the material packets come to the board members and I'm going to ask the board members if they've received their, their materials and read them. Uh, Larry, have you, sir?
We read everything that comes in.
Thank you, Larry. George, have you, sir?
I have not completely.
Okay, thank you. Leslie, have you?
Yes.
Okay, Woody, have you?
Yes, and I went through most of them again this morning.
Okay, thank you. And the chair is also, so thank you. There's your, there's the answer to your question, Catherine? Okay?
Thank you, thank you very much, we appreciate that. Okay, so I guess my next question is regarding the last meeting when Larry recommended dismissing the subdivision and there was no discussion. There were no other members polled to see if they wanted to make a comment to Larry's suggestion. And then I believe, I, I looked on the website, I believe that Chairman said he wanted to work with the developer and he wanted to make this work. Now, that's, that concerns a lot of people. And I'm just going to bring that to your attention, concerns a lot of people, that the board is supposed to either approve or disapprove. You're not supposed to help the developer. That's not in your job description. That, that's one thing. The other thing is that the question that people have is, why do you, why does the board not give the opponents of the subdivision any feedback like you do to the applicant? We haven't had any feedback. I've, I've said a few things, I'm not going to say them again because I'm sure you heard them and they've gotten absolutely no response. And, you know, according to the, the open meeting law, it's a requirement that you, the government, this is from Martha Coakley, it says, "The overriding intent of the open meeting law is therefore to foster and indeed require open discussion of governmental activity at public meetings." And I don't understand why the opposition has had no feedback, encouragement, understanding, nothing. And yet, as the planning board, your job is to follow the master plan. The original master plan, not the one that's been added to by 130 pages, and I have no idea why that happened, but the, the, the people do not want subdivisions. They do not want building residential building, they do not want commercial, and they do not want industrial. And that's in writing. And as the, as the gatekeeper, I think this board needs to take a broader look at what's happening. Are you just focusing on plans or are you focusing on the big picture, which is? No development, none. They're invading into my farmland. I can't have a farm anymore and we do have a right to farm by law. And yet you have never said to me why you've ignored that. So I'm confused. I'm also confused about the fact that, first of all, I didn't get the plans until today, so I have nothing really to contribute to the plans, maybe one or two things, but the overriding factor is that Lisa Mead is the town council. Why is she helping a developer that's really on the other side of the fence?
Okay, so Catherine, let me just, so what we're, what we're doing, this phase of this meeting process is we're gathering information. We don't, we don't, we, we're not into the deliberation, we're still gathering information. We ask questions of the, of the, of the applicant. So that's where this process is right now. So we have been in the information gathering component, we have not ignored anyone, we have not, we are keeping track of what public opinion is, so that will help us as we continue down this process. I want you to, to understand that we are not, we're not ignoring, we're not, not responding, we're still in the information gathering component. And when we've said to the applicant that we're working with the applicant, what we've have said is, in, in, previously, we were comfortable with a kind of process that might be going on because people can do what they want to with their land within the bylaws of our town. And so what we're trying to see is what makes sense within the bylaws of our town and as we go further in this discussion, what, what would work with that? So that's what our position is. And I hope that that explains those concerns, because again, we haven't made any decisions, we're still in the information gathering state. That's why I've asked for new comments or new information for the board. So thank you very much.
I have a comment about the plans. Would that be okay? I, I saw the elevations on the plans, 35 feet at, at high road, and then. And then the, as the elevations go down, they drop down to 17 feet above sea level. And then the last part was cut off. So I don't know how far into the, the floodplain, although I have the floodplain, I don't know how far that goes down. I mean, that's quite a drop. And so I just wanted to, you know, mention that.
Okay, I can ask that question too. Okay, any, anything else that you'd like to?
Basically, that was it. Everything else is just a rehash of the things that we have before. And I'm glad that you will be following the bylaws because the right to farm by law is a bylaw. And I appreciate that. And I know you'll read it again because it states that no town board or a butter can interfere with a farm.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Martha, our next question or comment from?
So I see Mark DePiero has raised his hand, and we have raised hands from Kristen Grubbs, David Powell. And Mark was actually third on the list, so I think Kristen comes first.
Okay, okay. So if that's okay, Kristen, you'll need to unmute yourself and just name and address, please. Thanks so much.
Hi, thank you, Pete and Martha. Kristen Grubbs, 28 Elm Street. I just want to thank the board for just handling the complexity of these conversations and projects. I really appreciate your, you know, your wise thinking. I wanted to just comment on your question, Pete, about comfort level with the yield plan. I think that's really important, that the board take the time to really consider the yield plan before having conversations about the open space in the OSRD. I don't know, I mean, I guess this is a question for the board or for council, but it doesn't seem to me that a yield plan should be subjective in some way. So the question of comfort or palatability seems a little, like, not quite accurate. I'm just wondering if the yield plan is something that should be, this is what our bylaw would allow the landowner to do by right. If that's information that is in dispute, that is one thing. But it doesn't seem to me to be an opinion kind of question. So I just would encourage the board, as you're saying, Pete, to take the time to make sure that the yield plan as proposed is indeed, you know, in coherence with the town's byright zoning. Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate. Good to see you. Martha?
Okay, so the next one is David, David Powell.
Okay. Hi, David.
Hi there. I just.
So name and address, Dave.
Pardon?
Name and address.
Oh, name and address. David Powell, 3 Salem Street, Newburyport. Thank you for entertaining my comments as a non-resident. Fascinating evening. Find it interesting that you had occasion to find opinions from an attorney about a bylaw that I wrote and was passed by the state of Massachusetts and accepted by them as being within the bounds of property law in this state. Anyway, that aside for a minute, what I'd like to point out is two things. One is that what Kristen just emphasized, I think, is very important. And that is that once you have the process opened, essentially, unless you can look at the, the submission that's made for a conventional subdevelopment for the yield plan, and feel that that, in fact, is a possibility, then really, you can't go any further if you decide that that is something that you can't accept. If you decide that you can, then you can go on. So I would see a great deal of, frankly, the discussion which we had from Attorney Mann earlier about contiguous upland is, is all moot until such point as the planning board has, in fact, looked at the yield plan. That being said, given that you now have in your proceedings this discussion of the issue of contiguous upland, contiguous upland is what it says and is not some fun game. Namely, contiguous upland requires that all of the upland abuts its, abuts itself in one way or another and does not involve wetlands. And that was the intention of the bylaw from the very beginning. It always has been, and it remains so. And it seems to me that you have a three-page statement. I haven't read it, but I'm hearing about it from an attorney to say that. And I have to say that at the time that this was redrafted, we had, at the then Planning Board, a discussion about what contiguous meant. And so please don't go down that kind of road because it's, all it's doing is obfuscating what you really need, in my opinion, to decide at this point as to whether this plan for a yield plan for a conventional subdivision is real. And my opinion would be, looking at this plan, and I, the first time I looked at it, I laughed, frankly, because this is not in any way a conventional subdivision. And nobody in their right mind would finance any part of this to actually be a buildable subdivision simply because the property lines are a nightmare. And anyone I know who is interested in owning a property that doesn't, in fact, create the kind of monstrous problems that any one of those would, would simply not buy it. So that's what it means by conventional. Doesn't mean necessarily that you can't play games with the rules and the regulations. What it means is that it's doable, that someone would go to market with it. And in, in my estimation, though I can understand that Steve Sawyer would tell you that it does meet all the requirements, sure, it does. But would you want to live there? Would anyone want to live there with those kinds of issues? So, you know, let's look at the realities. You, the reality is the odds you're trying to develop a property of which there are several in Newbury, in fact, rather a large number, which doesn't lend itself to subdivision development very, very well. And if this is the kind of contortions you have to go to, to provide a subdivision based on our rules, then clearly, this piece of property doesn't merit a subdivision and doesn't merit a yield plan of this kind. Now, it's possible, I'm sure, to provide a yield plan that might provide fewer, many fewer perhaps, units. But all I'm saying is, looking at this, this doesn't square with the whole idea that this has to be a conventional subdivision, namely a subdivision which, in fact, could, could actually be there. And if your applicant wants to come up with something like that, then I would recommend that if they come up with something that you can see is the conventional subdivision, fine, go ahead and go to the next step and look at anything they want to do that might have to do with an OSRD. But at this point, I, I don't know. I mean, the very fact this has been going on for so, so long tells me that, what is it? I mean, it's trying to make a silverstone of a salicyte, frankly. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments. Martha, where are we now?
So Mark did have his hand raised. And he's raising it again. Okay.
Okay, great. Go ahead, Mark.
So just a comment on David.
So just do your name and address for me, just for the record. Thanks.
My name is Mark DePiero. And I live in Andover, Mass. That information that David brought forward is exactly the same information as two times ago. Exactly the information. Number one. Number two, I think it's high time to mention next door, Mrs. O'Brien. This is very important to know. She came to me months ago to sell off the entire property. And if you want, we can put the emails up between the two attorneys as it was being negotiated. So the reason why I didn't buy the property is this four acres of wetlands out there that was cut down violently back in 2005. So I did not buy the property. She thought it would achieve 20 homes. We have all this information, and the public's wide open to see it. We decided against buying it because of her violation that still stands with Newbury on the order of conditions that has not been completed. That still stands, and that's why I didn't buy the property. And if I did buy the property, I was gonna do three additional homes on that property. She thought I could get 20 homes. That's how much she worries about the neighborhood. Okay, so she was ready to sell out and be done. I wasn't gonna buy it because of the order of conditions. I'll send a certified letter from the attorneys when they went back and forth trying to consummate an agreement. So that's number one. And that is all on paper, Mrs. O'Brien. So that time has to come. We waited for that, but I thought it was high time to talk about it. So again, talking about the yield plan. The yield does meet the rules. And we actually, we've exceeded some of the rules because I know the planning board was working last year to create five additional changes. One was a 100-foot circle to make sure it fit on the lot. Another was no lot on the traveled area would be under 40 feet width. We needed, we needed 90% of the 20, the 20-foot setback line, which we achieved. And there was only one thing we didn't achieve that I think Larry wanted. That was on the new zoning that he was trying, that the board was trying to work with and get through. So it does meet yield. The meeting back when we gave this here, Larry mentioned that we, you know, there's little that we can do concerning that yield if they meet. We felt that met yield by all standards. So is it, is it pretty and are they square lots? No. I've built hundreds of properties over the North Shore, and I've seen some of the wildest lot lines. But when it's all done, it looks very beautiful. So on paper, sometimes, the lines don't look perfect. But there is, if I had to build that yield as it is right now, it would look fabulous when it was done. No question about it. The drivers would look nice. It would be quite a place. So that's what I needed to say.
Thank you, Mark. I appreciate that very much. Do we have any other comments that you see? Martha?
I don't see any hands. Well, Catherine is raising her hand again.
Okay, okay. What, I'm just gonna preface this right now. What I do not want to get into, I do not want to get into, and he said and she said, that is not, that's not the intention of this meeting. And I just want to be really, 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 if this is new information for the gathering component that this board is doing, please, please tell me. Go ahead, Catherine. And we're gonna keep it really short, please.
All right, it's just a very quick sentence, and there isn't a bit of truth to what Mr. DePiero said. I just want people who are watching, I'm doing this because I don't want a subdivision there.
Okay, got it. Thank, thank you, Catherine. Thanks very much.
All right, I see Kendra raising her hand.
Okay, beautiful. Kendra, please name and address. Thanks very much.
Hello, my name is Kendra Boparla. I live on 25 Woodington Street, Newbury. Just as an outsider view, I just don't think that Newbury needs more houses. And has any, just for the question, has anybody actually went down to the property and looked at, see if this is actually gonna work? Not on paper? Have they actually went down there and like tried to visualize this happening? Just not on paper?
So I can try to answer your question, Kendra. The board has had the opportunity to do what's called a site walk. And what we do on a site walk is we look at, we look at the area, we look at the site, we gather information. We don't have discussions during sidewalks to do exactly what you're asking so that we can get a feel for what the environment looks like so that we can correspond that to what it looks like on paper. So the board does that, and we try to do that with each project that comes before the board. So we do do sidewalks, and they're posted. And Martha, make sure that we follow, follow all the requirements of sidewalks. So yes, we do that.
Okay.
Okay, thanks very much. Mark, do you have something new that you'd like to add?
Yes, just one addition, saying about the characteristics of the property. The entire site is basically beach sand, rapid absorption, absorption, two-minute material. The best of material. There are literally no trees here. There are no wetlands that we're gonna disturb. It is a textbook site for development. There's no steep hills. We're dealing with 2% and 3% slopes, not cutting trees. We have absolute perfect conditions on this site. That's all.
Thank you, Mark. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Martha, did you see any other public comment?
Let's see. I don't see any blue hands. I don't see anybody waving.
Okay, great, 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 great. Okay, let me bring it back to the, to the board. Any questions or any comments on what's been discussed? We've been kind of from one spectrum to the other. So I just want to kind of run back by the board to see if there's any additional thoughts or comments. I'm gonna start with you, George.
An open space residential development relies on the development of a yield plan that actually works and is, is in fact a yield plan. There's certainly some dispute among the attorneys on the board and representing Mr. DePiero between the two of them, and both of the, most of the members of the board have said no. So I think what would quiet this down fairly quickly is to have Jill Mann meet with Brian Winner and/or Lisa Taylor, Elisa, and sit down and say, in a quiet conference around the table, is this the yield plan a yard or not? And have them discuss it and see if they can come to a meeting of the minds. It really is a real decision because everyone can stand around and say, I say it's a yield plan. I say it isn't. And it might be helpful and final to sit down and have that kind of talk so that we can come back and say, all right, this is or it isn't. And then I'll bring it back to the board for review. And it's still the board's option and choice. But without a yield plan that works, you don't have an open space residential development possibility.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that, George. Larry, we're just trying to see if there's any additional comments from our discussion tonight. What are your thoughts, sir?
Well, it, it pretty much, I'm at where I was before. I mean, nobody likes this plan, and I doubt very much that it would seriously be put forward as, as a definitive subdivision. And I agree with 90% of what Mr. Powell had to say about it. However, I don't think we can impose a marketability test on a subdivision plan that comes before us. That's way out of our purview. If someone can show me where this does not meet our definitive subdivision regulations, I would be delighted to reject it. But I can't find it.
Okay, thanks, Larry. Leslie, any thoughts from our discussion so far for this evening?
Um, I actually like George's suggestion where the, both
Um, I actually like George's suggestion where the, both sides, the attorneys sit down and they meet and discuss the, what the yield plan is, what a yield plan is, and perhaps go over what the bylaws are. Because at this point, I'm, I'm not ready to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Woody, any thoughts?
I agree with what everyone just said on the board. Maybe, maybe some negotiations with, and have a set yield plan and come to a meeting in the minds between the attorneys. And I appreciate what David said as well because, you know, would you want to live here? So to speak, now we need a set yield plan to move forward. And something that everyone's happy with. We need to work towards that to move on, move forward, correct? So I, I would suggest that maybe that we'd figure out if the yield plan's compliant or not, and move on from there. If, if, if Lisa, me and the attorneys had a meeting that was productive, so be it. And that's, that's all for now.
Okay, thank you, Woody. Okay, Brian, I can't see your face. It's, it's shadowed. It must be my camera. It looks like we're kind of punting in your direction. What, what are your thoughts on that?
I have no objection to it. If it's the will of the board, we're happy to chime in on it, as long as the board understands that, you know, we're not engineers. We're not going to look behind the plan. We'll take the information as presented. And we'll review it in the context of the bylaw with respect to the yield plan. I'm familiar with it. Lisa Mead is familiar with it. And we can certainly review it through that lens and include Attorney Mann on that conversation. So I have no objection to that process if that's the, the wish of the board.
Okay. Thanks, Brian, Brian. I think the, the flavor that I'm getting from the board is that there's a majority of the board that would like to see that process take place. So what I'm going to suggest is that we continue this hearing and in the interim that there are meeting take place, one, if not two meetings, whatever's necessary between the attorney teams to see how this discussion would, would play out further with regards to yield. And then bring that back to this board with a, a position so that this board can continue with its information gathering component to then make a, make a direction. So I would love someone to
Can I, before, Mr., I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to make one comment. I, no, I, I would very much enjoy working with Brian and Lisa. I like both of them and I respect them both. And we can do that. I mean, the yield plan's pretty clear. Your engineer reviewed and there isn't any violations. And so did Mr. Graham find we comply completely. But I mean, I, I don't mind ratifying, but I would prefer to have a date set because this isn't, this really needs to be resolved because the plan has been reviewed by the engineer twice, the 12 unit as well as the 10, both of which did not follow any of the regulations. And there is absolutely no economic component to the board's decision. It's completely subjective. You meet the
I, I got it. I got it. I got it, Jill. So what, what?
But this is, you've been going on a long time, but so has Mark, and it's costing him a tremendous amount of money. So I'd just like to be able to have a date if Mr. Winner, Attorney Winner, sorry. We can set something so that we can meet the board's next meeting to be able to accept the CEO plan.
So what I suggested was that one, if not two meetings take place prior to our next meeting here.
Right, that's why I want to see.
Yeah, so I'm going to let you guys figure out the date. I'm, I'm not going to control anybody else's calendar, but what I will, what I will do is I'll entertain a motion, let that take place, and then I'll entertain a motion to continue this, continue this hearing. Okay? So would somebody like to suggest that the attorneys get together for a little?
Something for us, Peter?
Yes, sure thing, George.
Yeah, the meeting doesn't necessarily mean that there will be an agreement that it isn't a yield plan. It might be an agreement that is not a yield plan, or there may be no agreement at all. But this whole thing is so circular. Someone has to come down and say to the board and say, this is or it isn't. And it's supported by engineering. You have to say it is or it isn't, and then no matter what the decision ultimately is by the board, everybody has their own recourse. So I just, I want to see this kind of conclusion as soon as possible.
I appreciate that very much, George. Thank you. Is there an individual on this board that would like to direct the, the two legal teams to meet?
Yes, motion for legal on Planning Board and DePiero's side to have a conference with each other.
Prior to our next
Prior to our next meeting.
Great, thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Great. Any discussion? I don't see any. Larry, how say you, sir?
Yes.
Okay, George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
A great, and the chairs in favor too. Okay, I'd like to continue this meeting if that's the case, since we'll have an opportunity for these teams to meet. Martha, what do we have for a continuance date that's timely?
All right, let me pull that up.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Is it all?
Yep, it sure is. So right now we're in December 16th of 2025. No, I'm sorry, we're in December 16th of 2020. We do have the two continuances with the both boards. Looks like the 6th is full, so we're looking at the 20th, which is four weeks. I'd love to entertain a motion that we continue this hearing to the 20th of January 7, 15.
Also move.
Thank you, Larry. Is there a second? Great.
Second.
Thank you, Woody. And thank you, Les. Our roll call, Larry?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Chairs in favor as well. Thank you very much. Thank you everyone for their comments. We appreciate the public comment and the continued discussion, and we appreciate also the applicant's resubmission or this new submission. Okay. I think that, let me pull up the agenda. Martha, I think we can stop screen sharing.
Yep.
Okay, and let me just see where we're at with our, our agenda. So new business discussion of preliminary subdivision plan for Surly Lane 105 High Road. Author in Sandra Costanzas, applicant to Piro LLC, submission on November 18th, 2020. Is there any further discussion that we need to have with this in comparison to where we've been discussing? Let me see. Jill, is there anything that you, where do you want to go with this?
I mean, we, you know, because we're looking to freeze zoning, basically, that's why we filed.
Yeah.
So I, I just need the board to resolve. You can take a vote. You can accept. You can do whatever you see fit. I mean, the plan shows full compliance with the regulations.
Anything else, anything else? Okay, Larry, your thoughts, sir?
Well, we, we have a, a previous preliminary plan that's still in the pipeline.
It hadn't been continued and it wasn't, it was not properly put forth, which is why I had to resubmit. So it had been presented and never voted upon, and it can't lag like that. So
You didn't like that one?
Pardon?
Nothing, nothing. I would rather comment. Well.
Preliminary zoning, whether it, whether it has one lot, two lots or 20, it's simply meant to freeze, but it is the by right use.
Larry?
What?
You kind of interrupted.
No, I, yeah. I, I don't know, Pete, do you want to take a vote on this tonight or what? If we do, if we do nothing, I guess you, you, well, nothing happens. I mean, I'll, I'm prepared to move to disapprove it on the grounds that it's not practical and requires a special permit. That's a common driveway special permit. If you're inclined to accept such a motion.
Okay.
That gets you where you want to be, Joe, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. I appreciate it very much, Mr. Grant.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion? George, any discussion?
None.
Okay, Larry, any discussion?
No.
Okay, Leslie?
No.
Woody?
No.
Okay, and Larry, the intent of the motion is to
Disapprove.
Okay, all right. On the motion, Larry, how say you?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Woody?
Yes.
Okay, and the chairs in favor as well. Very good. There you have it, Jill.
Appreciate your time. Everybody have a wonderful holiday. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, let's see if there's any other business on our agenda. Martha, I, I see all business and I see the word none next to it. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right, we've done our select board re, report. We've done our Larry, did we do a ZDA? We did.
Yes, you were out of the room at the time, but
Thank you very much. I love when I'm out of the room for my, my apologies. Conservation, we, we did, and MVPC?
MVPC, we're having our commissioners meeting tomorrow, so I have nothing to report tonight.
Great, wonderful. And I don't see anything else. Anybody have any points of discussion for this evening? Okay, I don't see any. That being the case, I would entertain a motion for adjournment. I don't know who made it, but I heard a lot of voices.
Try that again.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Leslie. Is, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, I don't see any discussion. Larry, how say you?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
And Woody?
Yes.
Chairs in favor. Everyone, thank you very much for your patience. We appreciate you participating in the Planning Board meeting. Everyone, have a good night and good holidays. Thank you so much.
Happy holidays, everybody.
Bye bye, you too.
Thank you, Brian.
Night, everybody.
Thanks, Martha.
Stay warm, stay safe tomorrow.
Yeah, you too. Is it snowing yet?
Shades down. I can't see. It doesn't look like it started yet here. I'm quite a bit away from you guys, though.
Well, that's true. Drive safely. You've got a ways to go.
Okay, very good. Good night now, guys.